...1:00 PM. Just so everyone knows, because we have a quorum of the governing body, we have to go through the protocol of a formal meeting. And once we do that, we'll come off the dais and make it a casual conversational evening. So with that said, I first ask everyone to please rise to salute our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Don Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Excuse for work commitment.
Casper.
Same.
Tomato.
Here.
Delariva.
Here.
Sondemeyer.
President.
Yadzki.
Also with us are Minister of Public Clerk Jane McCarthy and our borough engineer, Nick Agnoli, sitting below. This is an official meeting of the governing body of the Borough of Bloomingdale on February 6, 2017. Public notification of the date, time, and place of this meeting is faxed to all local news media posted here at Borough Hall. We just have one matter this evening, which is discussion in regards to homes currently in flood zones as per FEMA mapping and our discussion on the borough's plan of searching to remap a lot of the neighborhood in the Van Dam flats, Knolls Road, re-vat section. So I wanted to start to give everyone a background of how this all came about. About two years ago, we had a resident in town approach me from the Oakwood Lake section of town off of Glenwald Ave. And he said he felt, based on his own calculations, that the mapping, FEMA mapping, was erroneous. And after reaching out to the DEP and FEMA and wasting a few months doing that to find out that they agreed there was errors and had no intention of remapping it whatsoever, we then retained the services of Mr. Agnoli, who again I'll introduce in a moment, to do an in-depth study of the Oakwood Lake section. And after a year or so processed, we were successful in removing over 130 homes from a flood zone because the mapping was wrong. And a lot of the mapping was from the '70s or prior, and the data they had and the tools they had at the time weren't what they are today to prove the potential elevations and the true flood zones, et cetera. So when we went through that, not only did we get 130 homes out, there were many homes that may have still remained, but based on corrected elevations, they were still able to come out with an elevation certificate. So what we do by going through this process is an actual letter of map revision. We're actually revising permanently the maps as opposed to what a homeowner can do on their own is a LOMA, Letter of Map Amendment, where you don't even have to wait for us, can try if you feel you're not in a flood zone, go get an elevation certificate for $500, $600, and file yourself with FEMA disputing whether you're in the zone or not, and they'll make a determination. Matter of fact, if you see the documentation, I don't know if the homeowner's here, but someone on Whitehaven who successfully filed that LOMA and was removed to flood zone X, which is out of the zone. But the letter did say that FEMA has intentions of remapping our community. That part's not true. They are remapping the Paquonic River Basin and not coming this far up. So we felt the governing body that it's worth our investment, your tax dollars, to invest the money to get as many homes out as we can. The Oakwood Lake section, the borough spent about $30,000, and it was worth every penny spent to get the homes, the 130 homes out, really plus more. A lot of them, a lot of the homes that were taken out were people with no mortgages, senior citizens who may have lived here, so they don't have flood insurance because they don't have a mortgage. But many people were in the position where they were forced to get it, and we're saving as you, those in the room who may have flood insurance, know how expensive it can be. So the goal is to get as many people out as we can. The maps Nick's going to review with you tonight are preliminary projection, and Nick's confident that when we're done, it shouldn't even be more narrow than what we're going to show you this evening. The goal of tonight is to get your input. As Nick does his presentation, we want to hear from you. Things like, "I live on Ty Street. I've lived there 40 years. I didn't flood during Irene." Those kind of, that kind of information is real important to Nick to gather as we go to FEMA. There's no guarantees that you'll be taken out of a flood zone, but we'll make every effort to do our best to get as many homes out that we can. And as I stated earlier, some homes may not be taken out, but proper elevations will be corrected, and there's a chance an elevation certificate can help in the long run. The other thing that's changed is I've run into a lot of homeowners who bought their house in the '40s, '50s, '60s, and the rules were different back then. You may have had a piece of your yard in the flood zone, not your structure, and were not required to carry flood insurance. Well, today, if you go to sell that house or refinance that home, the rules have changed, and the mortgage company's going to make you get flood insurance. So again, another example of taking out that piece of your yard or the elevation certificate as we get further through the process. I think we'll see a lot of great success, and Nick feels we will have some success in this. Not only off Van Dam, you can see the blue area on the map. There were errors as far as Knolls Road, corner of Reeves. I mean, that elevation is so high above the Brook that it's impossible these homes would ever flood, and it's just a matter of appealing that, getting the proper elevations, and getting the maps permanently revised, not just amended by lot by block. So that's our goal. We've had great success. Matter of fact, in Nick's many years of his career as a hydrologist, this was one of the largest removals we did on Oakwood that you've seen.
This was ours, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So what we did when we completed that project, I just said, you know, let's do a cursory review on the rest of the town, and that's what we did. And fortunately, we had about 22,000 left from funding the first project. Should not have to fund or borrow or do anything with new money for this project. We had enough to proceed, and that's what we're doing. Tonight's a kickoff meeting. We will have more meetings. The process could take as long as a year, early fall is the best-case scenario. The quicker we get our data to Nick and we submit it, the better off we are. Again, my card, before you, if you haven't taken it, you have three documents here. The map, which is just informative for you, Nick's card for email purposes, and my business card, cellphone, email, whatever you guys need to contact me. Because as we go on, if you're not comfortable speaking tonight, that's fine. You can just drop me or Nick an email. "Hey, John, I live here. This is my situation. Never had a flood," and those kind of stories, because we really want to gather that information. If you're not an email person, there's a data sheet you can grab before you go. Complete this and get it back to Borough Hall, and I'll make sure Nick gets your information so we can respond to each and every one of you. As we get down the line, we're close to the finish line, we arrange with an organization called DNC, it's a survey company in Butler, who became part of our project, and those families who needed the elevation certificate, he was able to provide a substantially discounted rate to do that for everyone in our affected area. So we'll probably have two, possibly three, two more meetings, one or two more meetings from tonight. And I'll do mailings to keep informed of the progress, because I know after tonight's meeting, I'll be getting emails in May and June, like, "Hey, where are you? What's the status?" And that's fine. But we'll do our best to communicate. Anytime you have a question, reach out to me and or Nick, and we'll work together to do it. Get all the answers we can for you. I'm excited about it. I think we're going to have success. And it's a shame that if we're successful, you've lived in your home 20 years and paid all that premium, all we can do is look forward. It will help your property value, put a lot of money back in your pocket for flood premiums. Those who still will remain, in case you do not know, the second phase of this flood study was, there's a program called the Community Rating System, CRS. The borough became a member through satisfying certain criteria last year. So if you have flood insurance now, you should be receiving a 10% discount that you were not getting previously. And if you're not, contact your agent, because Bloomingdale is now certified by a member of the CRS, Community Rating System. We can get up to a maximum of 25%, which we're working on.
Yes.
We're confident by the end of this year, we'll probably get up to 15%, possibly 20. But if you're not familiar with that, look at your deck page of your flood policy, and you'll see what you're getting, the CRS, Community Rating Discount. If not, you should be at least getting 10%. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nick Agnoli, who's such an asset to the borough in what we've done so far and moving forward. And Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay.
And we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Hi, good evening. I'm Nick Agnoli. I'm a civil engineer, and I worked on the Oakwood Lake Brook project, which is, as the mayor correctly asserted, took about 125 homes out of the flood plain. I apologize, I'm slurring a little bit. It's not because I went to Blue Owl House, it's because I have Lyme disease. So I am recovering, so I apologize if I'm slurring. It's not because I decided to go out before the meeting, it's because I'm slurring. So just to be clear on that. I've been asked that a couple times, and I finally caught on. With regard to tonight's presentation, and I'll highlight it throughout, but anyone sitting here tonight who lived in their home during Hurricane Irene, which was the 100 Year in northern Jersey, and did not flood, and is playing flood insurance, please, by the end of tonight, either talk to me during, or if you don't want to, I have all the contact information. Please, by Friday, get me the stuff I asked for, which is what I'll explain, you know, how long you've lived there, what did you experience? Because that evidence was part of our appeal at Oakwood Lake Brook. Because what we did was, we plotted all these homes and said, "I've lived here since 1960. I didn't flood during Irene. I'm paying flood insurance. That doesn't make sense. You know, I couldn't even see the water from my deck." And that helped me quite a bit working with my modelers to verify that there was no way you should be in the flood zone. Secondly, if, and again, I'll ask for this, but just got to get your head going now. If you have any photographs of Irene, whether it's a water line, or you're like, "I was standing out here during the peak." We have all the rainfall data, you know, we have all the stream data. We know what about the peak was. Please, a digital copy of the photograph, either hard copy, digital copy, whatever. Again, that was extremely helpful calibrating our model, which we presented to FEMA, and we're completely successful. All the homes, we tried to remove, and Oakwood Lake Brook, we got them all out. So I'd like to do the same for everyone in the room. So again, when I get to that part, just get your mind going now, please, and don't feel awkward cutting you off. I'm an engineer, I'll come forever. So cutting you off is a very good idea. It's true. This is the biggest lie I ever tell is I'll be brief. I will not be brief. Okay, I just want to explain where we are in the process. Again, I'm very happy to be on board. I will work tirelessly to make sure that we get the maximum of our homes out that we can. FEMA will not be remapping the tributaries to the Quonic, just to the Quonic. So as new maps come out, there's no fear of all this getting rescinded or reversed. It won't happen. We remapped Oakwood Lake Brook, the maps that we did a couple of years ago are now the maps of record. So again, once we remapped this section, those become maps of record. And that, just to define the two terms, it's going to be an acronym, Latin, process tonight. Letter of Map Amendment, LOMA. It's when the individual owner goes and says, "I am OAS." Doesn't mean anything bad. It means out as seen, meaning I looked at the map, there's no way I'm in the flood zone, my insurance company is making me buy insurance, this is silly. An OAS is out as seen. So Letter of Map Amendment, LOMA, that's what a lot of people go out and get on their own. What we're doing here is called an LOMR, Letter of Map Revision. What that means is, you don't just get a letter in the mail, you get brand-new maps to the community. And that's great for fighting against your mortgage companies for funding when you're trying to sell your house, and also for having a permanent record with FEMA of the changes. That's a huge benefit of a Letter of Map Revision. And when the next set of maps comes out, it just gets inserted right in. The maps that we did on behalf of the community are now part of the official record with FEMA.
Excuse me, Nick, I just wanted to add your [inaudible].
I got the word coming, Mayor.
If you're not in a flood zone right now, are you sure you're not going to be added in?
No.
Just to make sure that you're [inaudible]. The red is what you want to do?
Correct. The red, ah, I'll get there. No, no, it's not.
Well, that's [inaudible].
It's going to be much smaller than that, and I'll explain why. So if anybody's looking at the map going, "You're pulling my house in. I'll meet in the parking lot." No. That's not, please, I'm an engineer, I'll lose pretty much.
As I said in my opening remarks, this is preliminary, and there's [inaudible].
And I'll explain very clearly what that red line means as we get into it. Thank you for the question, and I promise I'll get to that. In fact, I'll skip ahead right after the slide.
When did FEMA release the new updated map?
Okay. The ones that are quote-unquote effective were 2007. The maps that are subject to appeal, that are currently going through the process for the county of Passaic, 2015. However, they do not affect the tributaries of the Paquonic, such as Van Dam Brook, Oakwood Lake Brook. They weren't improvised at all. It says that the entire section was reviewed and changed, but it wasn't. The tributaries are the same.
Let's have Nick go through his presentation. Mark down your questions, then we'll do Q and A after this.
I'll keep talking, I'll let him. All right. All right. So where are we? Review of original FEMA model, we completed that. Verified the hydrology. What that means is, we looked at, now I'm going to skip ahead, because we looked at how much water was supposedly during a storm getting into the streams. And I'm going to jump away ahead. And what we found, it looks like an eye test, covered left eye. Read the bottom rubber. What we found was that, we looked at, and the 1% storm is also known as the 100-year storm, so the 1% of the 100-year storm, in areas where they're saying, let's say, 450 cubic feet per second, we found more like 410. So by using the same methodology that FEMA used a long, long time ago when they originally did the study, the data on the cover is misleading. You'll get a FEMA study, and it'll say, "Oh, it's 2015." The actual flows that they're using are from 1978 on the tributaries, so they've never been updated. And you say, "Well, could not work against this, because in 1978, maybe it wasn't as developed as it is now." We agreed. So we looked at it, and we used the same methodology that they used back in 1978, just using better computer systems than they had at the time, and we're finding that the flows are too high. So the question with regards to the red line, the way we created that red line is we took the original flows from 1978, right here, and we ran them through the original model. And what happened was, because we have much better topographic, our elevation data now, much better. In 2008, the Army Corps of Engineers for the Highlands Council flew the entire area of North Jersey, and they got really, really good elevation data for all of North Jersey. We have free access to that, and FEMA is willing to accept it. So one of the huge cost savings is we don't have to go out and do tons of survey. You will see surveyors from DMC. DMC survey, please don't chase them off your property, they're trying to help. They'll be going out and surveying culverts in a couple of random stream sections, but on a whole, we had really, really good surface data. And when we re-projected the original flow data on that map, we found that there were huge areas that should never have been in the flood plain, because based on modern elevation data, they're just, they're not anywhere near the flood plain. And for instance, you get over by the baseball field, and you move downstream, everything facing downstream to the right, I'll use some road name, sorry.
Boston.
Boston, Park Avenue, parts of Van Dam Avenue. Chestnut Street is, using the old data, is where it really should have begun. So between Chestnut, all the way down to Paquonic should not be in the flood zone by the old data. So again, what that map shows there is the original flow data re-projected over the elevation data today, there are large sections of the Van Dam Avenue community that should not have been part of the flood zone. Now, when we looked at the flow, coupled up with the fact the flows are too high, so when we remodel the flows with the data from DMC, we expect that red line to go in another amount of distance. What we will not do is, we will not appeal an area where we'll add homes to the flood zone. I just want to be clear on that, that we're not in the business of making things worse. When we redid Oakwood Lake Brook, we took 125 homes out, period. Okay? So again, we're being very cautious not to bring additional home data. And again, we're being very cautious to make sure and take into account the flow reductions. So the red line you see here is simply the original data re-projected over the better topographic data, and already it got better. Then when we went back, we looked at the flows, the flows are about 20% too high, we'll run those through the new model with the DMC data. We didn't want to run the old, we didn't want to run the new flows through the old model, it was silly, avoid to get the new data from the field. Make sense?
Yes.
Okay, good. Now, so to go over that into the colorblind, I apologize, I was yelled at at the last meeting. Red line's right here, and so you'll see here, again, there's about 25 homes right here that just by elevation alone should not be in the flood zone. And that was the initial, Mayor, when he asked us to do the screening and council, that was one of the areas initially, we looked at the screening and said, "The mapping's just wrong. It's based on topographic data from a long time ago." Areas here, areas up here, areas around here, it just, again, there's just no physical way for the water to get to those properties. Couple that with the fact that the flows are going to be reduced, I would expect the majority of the properties along the red line to be out as well. I would expect that line to move in, if not 50 feet, something of that nature. And there's a scale bar at the bottom. So the blue is the original study. It says 2007, but it's really never changed since it was originally done. The red line is what Agnoli Engineering re-projected in the original flow data, and Paquonic River was right here. Baseball field is here, a couple of points of reference, there's Knolls Avenue, as the mayor asserted, very, very steep. I expect this line to come way in. So that's, the map that we have right here is what we're going to use. So to take your data in, so tonight, when there's an opportunity to provide data, you don't have to speak up now, you can email, and we'll get to that slide. But that's what's going to be helpful, because what I'd like to do when we walk away tonight, because there's so many people here, is once I have all your personal stories, we actually, believe it or not, we tag it to each of these little lot blocks, and we start to create a green and red zone. Green means I have never flooded. My family's been here pre-Irene, we didn't flood, that was the 100. And red, yes, I flooded, a couple of feet, that sort of thing. And when we put all those on the map, we should start to see a pattern. And this is exactly what happened to Oakwood Lake Brook. We saw huge areas of green, meaning I've never flooded, in the flood zone. And so we focused very hard on those areas, because we have huge, huge clusters of areas that never flooded during Irene, and we wanted to get, focus our model on those areas.
[inaudible].
Oh, and again, sorry, I should have brought that up. Irene was August 28th to 29th, 2011. Some people refer to it as 2011 storm, some refer to it as the 100 Year. It's pretty close, it was about the 90 in this town, so it's a great calibration event for the modeling. So just curiously, by show of hands, how many pay flood insurance, lived through, lived in their house prior to 2011, but did not flood? Excellent. Yeah, please, before, anyone just raise their hand, please, before you leave tonight, either get my information, it doesn't have to be tonight, but get me, get me those stories and any photographs, especially with the structure. And when I say structure, it's a bridge deck, stump, fence, house, front steps, anything, anything I can use to calibrate the model, I greatly appreciate it.
I'd ask if you're going to choose to email Nick this week? Probably me on the email, too. Did you get my part?
Yes, please.
Nick, definition of flooding? Water in the basement?
Oh.
Water in the basement, water in the yard.
There's three. Thank you, and I did have that on the slide, so thank you for bringing that up. There is backup flooding in the basement, don't worry about that, meaning water came up through your sub-pump, sub-pump lost power, that I don't need. There is ponding water, drainage system on the street wasn't working, water backed up, came to your house, don't worry about that. I need moving water, meaning water came in because of the fact you're near the river, the river came up and actually entered your home. So yeah, the other two, don't worry about, thank you. And I know that eliminates probably almost everyone. It's flowing water from the river came into your house and did damage, is all I need.
Somebody comes up from the floor of the basement, that's your water.
Yeah, I don't need, that's backup, and I won't need that.
That's bad.
No, it's just, if that river physically connected to your house in some way, other than groundwater. Great question, thank you.
Yeah, groundwater doesn't necessarily fit in the flood zone.
No.
It's not a river, it's a tributary that fits in the flood zone.
Yeah.
But groundwater, you cannot be in the flood zone, still carry flood insurance. Check, because any water that touches the ground causes damage, is considered flood insurance. Unless you have a backup of a drain or a sub-pump [inaudible].
Backup rider is a really good idea, too, under insurance, yeah.
If you're just getting sea fish through your basement windows or foundation, even or not, flood insurance will still cover that, whether you're in the zone or not. If you're not in the zone, it's cheap, you get [inaudible] for a couple hundred dollars, get $3,000, $4,000, you don't [inaudible].
Yeah, ironically, I got moved into a flood zone. Sure seen that one coming. Thanks, FEMA. That's why I'm so, that's why I'm so into this. They're like, "I'll have ready one." I'll tell you how great that insurance is, trust me. Like dryers not qualified.
[inaudible].
I was like, "Everything on the curb, did you count them?" Talk about me. Perform field inspections, that's in process. If you see myself or somebody else with an Agnoli Engineering shirt, we're not stealing stuff, we're just going out there to look at the, look at the streams. Develop draft model. Again, we completed that. Map draft findings, that's in process. I'm just awaiting survey. DNC survey is out, you've probably seen it, if not, you will shortly. Great time for survey, because the leaves are off the trees. So I expect to have the model, Mayor, to your question and council, I expect to have that model done two weeks after I get the survey, because we have it just about completed. Finalized model, submit for peer review. We go through Clayton Smith, he's a former FEMA contractor. We use it for peer review, it just speeds things up quite a bit with FEMA, because they know one of their own has looked at it. And then I submit a LOMR, Letter of Map Revision, to FEMA and to the NJDEP. So a bit about the process, as I discussed before, LOMR, Letter of Map Revision, it modifies the effective flood insurance rate map. It's an official revision, so it'll be in the next version that comes out. It's in there, but it's effective on the date it's stamped. So for instance, Oakwood Lake Brook was effective last August. As of August 31st, 2016, that map became law, which means you carry flood insurance. And we'll talk about that as well. It was not as automatic as we had hoped. The insurance companies made it very difficult, and I'll explain how we'll fight that collectively. So I think it sounds so easy and fun here. Go ahead.
I know that's a fun part.
Yeah. No, no. All right. So here, I'll skip, I'll skip to the, I'll skip to the heart of it. So it doesn't go smoothly? No, it doesn't go smoothly. What will happen is, some insurance companies will, and mortgage companies together, will see that you have been removed, the new maps are out, they can look them up online. Some of them will request a Letter of Map Amendment, an LOMA. Okay? So what will happen is, and we are going to be successful, once successful collectively, you'll be noticed. And again, that sort of thing, that's a great forum for you to ask questions like So once that, once that comes out, what that means is, it's about to switch to a Letter of Map Revision. So you'll also get that letter an effective date. It will say, as of December, let's say December 1st, 2017, the tax draft map will become final, and you'll look at it and you'll go, "Oh, good, I'm out. That's terrific, I'm out, so I should not pay flood insurance anymore." You send that map to your insurance, or just call, call your mortgage or insurance company, depends on who handles it. I usually just call the mortgage company and find out who their insurer is, and say, "Okay, look, it appears to me I shouldn't pay flood insurance anymore," and they have the right to request a Letter of Map Amendment. Now, a Letter of Map Amendment is simply a professional, don't have to be, reviewing the new maps and saying, "Yes, I've looked at it, it's correct." And then FEMA reviews that and sends you a LOMA. Now, if you go to an engineering firm, they'll be charging, okay? So you can do it yourself. And I said, "Look, you go to an engineering firm, they charge about $500, but if you don't like that, you can actually do this yourself." Now, I'm going to walk through that in a second. But you'll get halfway through and be like, "Oh, no, I need a copy of my file deed. I don't have that, it's in the safe deposit box, I lost it." They're available online. Actually, Passaic County has put all your deeds online. So you actually can do a LOMA on a Monday morning or a Sunday morning, sitting at your computer, you can actually file one yourself. You don't need an engineer anymore. The filed, the filed records are all available now, so.
And Nick, not everyone needed, 125, look, how many?
I did, I did 36.
36.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't charge anyone. I shouldn't say that, but I did.
We didn't expect that many, but.
I thought I was going to get like five.
That was really the mortgage company who did the, you know, the map.
So yeah, we did 36 letters of map amendment. But again, rather than being concerned, I would say optimistic, because it wasn't too bad. And then if you still need help, please, you'll call or email me, because I'd love to help you guys out, especially fighting against FEMA, I had a liking it. So this is how you do it. I just want to show you real quick what the site looks like, rather than just talking about it.
And before we submit anything, we will have another meeting with the final, final map of Clayton Smith, because he's exactly where you're calling. I don't want to put a timeframe on him, if he had to, that would be a sign. Nick, that's a little premature about that.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, it's, and again, it's a, just know that, know that that's available.
And we'll go over that again, unless I can put that information in the mail.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll. Okay, now, now, what do we need? Again, I've mentioned here, they'll be assisting me in processing this, so don't worry about overwhelming us, we don't care. This is what I love, again, your photos of Irene, and your descriptions of what happened to your property, and you email me, call me. Email's good only because that way I have a written record, right? I just need, and if anyone here does not have email, I have the exact same questionnaire on our copy, I've got 10 copies up at the desk. But if you do have email, you need address, how long, after the address, contact information, your memory of Irene, and any prior flood events. So go back, we have, we have rainfall data back to 1936, so if you have storm, Floyd in 99, you know, whatever.
It's going to be, Nick, what we will do, Rich, Councilor, we'll put experience on the website.
Oh, thank you very much. Oh, that's great.
About a year, this is a week, I have it on.
Any images you have, images are great as well, and don't worry about file size, we can handle pretty big files. It could be, it could even be, even if it's a black and white photo, it doesn't matter, just any photographs, especially if you have a photo of the flooding, just give me a reference somewhere. Just let me know, you know, what you're taking a photo of, because if it's a really good, it's something real good, like, that I know is going to still be out there, like a shot of a bridge or something like that, we'll ask the surveyor to go back out that line was, that one of the lines was, we'll go out, we'll shoot the elevation, as part of our proofing process to our friends at FEMA. And again, if you don't have, if you don't have email, yeah, please, grab a paper copy, save information. I'm going to leave it open indefinitely, just get me as much as you can by Friday, and what I'll do then is I'll take all the information, load it into the computer, and then through Mayor Council, I'll ask that be published on the website, I won't put any addresses on it, I'll just show green and, green and red, you know, yes or no, that I flooded. Again, I won't, I won't put any addresses or anything like that on there, you won't be able to tell, personal, people's personal information, but you will start to see the pattern of red, of red and green. You know, areas that shouldn't, that should not have been mapped as in the flood zone. You know, that.
What if you don't have any?
That's okay. It's, it's, it's good enough for me, you know, I live at nine something street, I lived here for 50 years, I've never flooded, and I have, on the map, you're right in the middle of like a floodway. Because then again, you don't worry about photographs, they just helped me go back out and verify elevations. But what's just equally good to me is, especially long time, if you live in this community for a while, I have to hear from you, because I can't get that information anywhere else. And the models, they'll tell you a million things, I want to calibrate it against something. And that saved us so much time and effort on Oakwood Lake Brook, I can't even tell you. Like, we eliminated probably an extra 25 homes, because people showed us that the water just does not physically go that way. And when we went out in the field, definitely found, it was accurate. Was that?
Tree.
No, anything. Trees, fences, signposts are great, telephone poles are terrific. Guide rails are real good, did we shoot survey on that? Again, roadway flooding is real good. Just sometimes I get photos, and it's like a shot down of the water, and that's great, I don't, I don't worry.
Videos okay?
Videos terrific. That's a step up. That's good. That's true, I had the car wash on, on my phone.
I'm saying that like, with these stories and these pictures, it's kind of cool on the process, so I see about 20 homes here of hundreds of homes that have, how do we get our neighbors to up the waters process?
Oh, well, what, the mayor, the council putting this on the website helps out a lot, because the more information I can get, the better. But really, it's okay to have scattering, because at least it pushes me in the right direction, not having 100% of the people here is okay, because what will happen is, we will start to see patterns forming. And there are areas that are legitimately in the flood plain, there's not that many, but there are areas that are legitimate in the flood plain. So if you know of anybody, however, especially a neighbor, anyway, and they, they lived through Irene, and they weren't impacted, please have them reach out to me, or reach out to me on their behalf, because we will use every single piece of information. People, I think people thought I was kidding last time, we mapped 75 properties on Oakwood Lake Brook. And it helped out quite a bit, and it showed, and the final mapping looked a lot like the stories we got from the people in town. I can't think of any instance where someone's like, I never flooded, and we found six feet of flooding.
The project area is defined in that box on the map, pretty much the entire map.
Yep.
But anyone, everyone had a letter in this project area.
Yes.
But anyone who lives here, it's not coming tonight, because they're not in the flood zone, they're not, so, I think everyone who's here tonight, not everybody, but everyone who's close to the blue spot, right? But remember, we made a couple of homes that, that people were never here. We don't forget, like, we don't say, welcome, you sound like there's something there that says, hey, we're trying to get that in the flood zone, you're welcome to bring people in here. So, not too much for that, other than multiple, because there's some, we did have more people at our center.
Yes.
Yeah, we had a lot more people. So, the second one that says, hey, come move the maps, you can bring them out, but there are a lot more people, but like, let me ask you, you know, hopefully talk to your neighbors and ask them, hey, I just hear a deed, it's important, we can fix that up, I made more copies, bring extra, we can do it.
Or if you don't like it, say, oh, it's all over there, it's all in there, I'm not like, like six feet deep, it was in their house.
It's hard, the neighbor.
All right, we'll just move it, no problem.
The neighbor not here, so we can find out if it's low or high.
Anyone not at anyone, put the board on their phone. Models away.
Have seen the previously removed from the flood plain, can they put you back in once you've done the water?
No, what will happen is, we'll check for letters of map amendment, we'll look for LOMAs, because they're all, they're all published, and what we'll make sure is, if we don't pull areas in that are, if it's a Loma, we'll keep it out. And, and again, I want to, I want to be clear that with better survey data, and with reduced flow, our confidence level is high for total reduction. If either of those wasn't in place, I couldn't say that with confidence. So again, I had better survey data, and which was already placed out there, and with the old flows, the area reduced. Coupled up with the fact that flows are actually going down, again, the expectation will be a reduced flow of all areas. And again, my confidence level, that is very high.
The only reason being that we're taking someone out because of the Loma.
Yes.
That's on file, but they can reverse.
Correct. No, and it's no, again, it's OAS, out as seen. What FEMA can do, okay, what FEMA can do is say, okay, if you're mapping in the neighborhood, you need to re-verify that this Loma is accurate, they can certainly do that, but whatever information backed up before is still, is still relevant. An old elevation certificate, something got you out prior, okay, so something backed that letter of map amendment. Elevation certificates don't age out. The elevation certificate that was done, let's say, 1997, that gave you a first floor elevation of your home, which meant you were out, first and this floor, is still in all of it now.
We have about six to eight LOMAs in the old project area.
Yes.
No one had it recently.
I have a question for you, sir. You guys are talking about Oakwood, wherever, um, done all that.
I love Lake too. I forgot.
What spurred you to bring on, to this area? Just the number of people that were filing the LOMAs?
No, no. Organized with that.
Well, personally, I'll add that you can answer professionally, personally, was if Oakwood's wrong, you didn't have it, simple as that. And so let's look, my focus initially was not so much, yeah, because honestly, of course they had the flood zone. So I'm really focusing on, I know, Knowles, and I know part of Knowles and Reed, there's homes that are three feet above Brook, and they're in the flood zone, and that was really my initial focus. So Nick, along the whole country here, it's a nickeling of whole pond, or tributaries, and it was much greater than I thought it would be. So it was just a matter of having three grand extra last year, and say, let's do cursory on the rest of the town, and this is where we found the problem.
No, consulting, I said, three grand, sure, I'll have anything. No, what, the mayor asked me to screen all the streams rivers, so what you see up there, we defer every tributary to the quantity, and the only one that there was a noticeable change was this one. And that was because, along the other tributaries, there weren't enough homes along it, it was impacting areas of Larsen Woodie, and also, the area of reduction wasn't that great. We didn't, we didn't find that there would be much benefit at all, spending taxpayer dollars, it just, it didn't look like the maps would change much. And then we projected this one, it was very much like Oakwood Lake Brook, where we said, just by elevation, the maps do not seem to be accurate.
Remember that, okay? August of last year, it took a year.
It took about one year. Yeah, it was, yeah, August. August is when they, is when they agreed, it was submitted to them the November prior, and the reason for the delay was just the sheer magnitude, it was 100, it was over 100 homes, which they never experienced before. And I'm very proud of that, that's a good, that's a good reason it was delayed, but it took.
You probably lost about six months prior to bringing a picture, thinking FEMA would just give the right thing.
They, they agreed.
They agreed.
They said the maps are really bad. Who did this?
They agreed, you know, DV, we agree it's wrong, but.
DV said the same thing, they're like, yeah, these maps are really bad, somebody should pay for this.
Was scary nationally, thinking about, like, where else?
Yeah, the, and the thing to understand is, because I don't want to, I don't want to FEMA bash, that's not my intent, it's, the tributaries don't get the level of attention that the main rivers get at all. A couple of cross-sections dictated the entire Oakwood Lake Brook stream, you know, thousands of feet of river were dictated by just a couple of cross-sections, and a lot of estimation of just a sloping water surface, I mean, Oakwood Lake, the actual lake itself had a sloped water on it, I mean, which is physically impossible. So that's the kind of stuff that we found before, and we saw some of these similar problems here, which was, there's a lot of generalizations and guesswork that were done. Because if you think about it, they're trying to map, you know, 25,000 streams, the smaller ones like this one are going to get estimating jobs, not, not accurate, not accurate survey and inaccurate modeling.
Plus, they had no other lakes and draining into Oakwood Lake.
Yeah, there were a lot of other problems. I'm kind of simplifying, yes. And again, a three-foot slope of water on the, on the, on the lake, which I still can't figure out, I haven't. And on the upper end, the, the water was, we found, it was, I think it was 20 feet too deep, which, which would definitely pull a lot of people into the flood zone. So a lot of happiness up there, and hopefully there'll be a lot of happiness down here. So what I'd like to do, and I'll leave it up to Mayor Council for your time, I would like to speak to the people who are, were here during Irene, that did not flood, but do play flood insurance. I can sidebar after this meeting, or I can do it now, it's up to you.
Yeah, you can do that, I mean, we, the council needs to, but that's fine, so why don't we just ask?
Questions before you go?
Well, before you give that, ask more questions, but again, for everyone here, there's Nick's email, Nick's email, so all that, but Nick's looking forward before he goes tonight, is people who are paying flood insurance, who did not flood, so we want to hear your input. Before we open that up, any questions? Again, if you have a question tomorrow, email me and Nick, we'll answer it right away. Any other general question? Yes?
Yes, we tried to start a law over 40 years ago, and we had a search, a survey, and poor property was in, so the bank did not require insurance because of that, it was only a piece of the part of the property.
Right, not to ask itself.
Now, why, in last year, the bank, you know, small HELOC, the bank contacted me and were telling me I need to close.
That is such a good question. Yeah, anybody who's refinancing right now will have the exact same reaction from their, from the loan provider that you had, under federally backed loans, which is everyone in the room, because the Fed's back on those old loans. What happened was, when you go to refinance, the software they use is not very good, it just does the property. The new software, it just goes by, it will look at the lot block, and decide whether or not the floodlight hits, it will not look at where your house is. And that's why so many people, the last couple of years, have been going, I have never had flood insurance, and all of a sudden, you know, I own a three acre property, and the river touches one end, my house is way up here, like, this is ridiculous, but my, my financier is saying, I have to carry flood insurance. Those are the ones that I'm doing LMA, letter of map amendment, OAS, out as seen, meaning you can look at the map and go, there's just no physical way this river will ever touch my house, you know, basically, so.
So you can even wait for our process?
Yes.
Let's say you want to sell your house in the next six months, right? You can go get your own Loma.
Yep.
And get it out, so a buyer will not have to do that, so you don't have to wait for our process.
And that's one of the options on a Loma site, there's three, and one of them is, I'm not trying to do my property, I'm just trying to move my structure. So it's structure out, that's the one you want. And what they'll do is, what they're going to ask for a couple of things is, they'll say, hey, you know, if you got a copy of the map, please provide it, FEMA has their own maps, don't worry about that. But the deed, where I gave you that, that you need to file, there's three pieces of information you need to file, all your personal information, you need to file your deed, and you need to file the map, don't worry about the map, usually they don't get, they're not sticklers on that, the deed, they're sticklers on the whole region.
So Nick, I live to the council's Loma map, so I have the same situation, and so if we don't file, are not to be included in this?
Yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the entire area, as for Mayor Council's request, I will, however, recommend that right now, if you look at the map, you're like, I'm not it, like, the river does not physically touch my home, the flood plain, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say river, the flood plain, a blue area doesn't, and so please look at the map, if the blue area doesn't touch your house, yes, go ahead, like, tonight if you want, and file, or whenever it's posted, file letter of map amendment. If you have any trouble, just email me at this email address, and I'm happy to help you out. The site's a little difficult to navigate, just keep going through the screens.
Would we should file that, or we should just?
Oh, you do yourself.
Could you, again, let's say you have a renewal for your flood insurance in May, you're going to have to pay that, because we're not going to be done with that.
Well, it's the same thing, I never had to have flood insurance, but my, the back of my property line.
Don't do anything.
Thumbs up to the town.
Only, only if you're, only if you're paying flood insurance, don't, don't.
You're not paying flood insurance.
No, I would not consider that flood all of a sudden, I don't know, flood every all of a sudden because I touched.
No. Because the reality is, let's say the line doesn't move and it stays on your property, if, when you go to sell the house, if the next realtor goes, oh my gosh, you're in the flood zone, you can do a Loma. You can do a Loma at any, at any time. It takes, a Loma takes 30 days.
Would you say you have flood insurance today, you have to move that, move on, doesn't touch your structure, you don't want to wait for us, because you're probably paying insurance now, or a month, sorry, you have to see the map.
Yes.
Insurance, they'll cancel, once this is all done, if you're midterm on insurance policy, they'll cancel it, refund you the other premium, but they will not back it. So, you know.
Yeah, I feel bad about the other issue, because if people are like, but I haven't paid it since 1981.
Three years, they won't, they won't go back on it.
So once you're done, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, once you're done with this process, and if my house is not considered that, it's in a flood area, would we receive something from this survey and everything that's done stating that my house is not?
No, because, and that's the benefit of a LOMA, letter of map revision, there's an official map set out now on the FEMA website that shows that you're not in. However, if your provider can file yourself, because what happens is, a Loma takes, takes me out of the equation, because a Loma is between you and FEMA. You file, and say, on your map, my structure, which I just circled, is not in, and then they concur and file back to you. Again, it takes 30 days.
But if your property, no longer is in it at all, or is in touch with it, or you're not, you're not going to get something, hey, you're out, you'll get something from us saying, you're out, the new maps are going to publish the next day, so that's, you have to go match, hey, you have to go deal maps, and you'll get anything special if you're out, and the maps are not in.
Every single home that's impacted by it will be noticed, is required.
And you go, far from easy, you guys are not going to be getting an elevation survey for that, you're not going to be filing for that.
No.
You're just going to be applying everything here with your determination. No, no, we're going to, we're going to, based on our determination, change the maps, and like, in Oakwood, you will still have to have an elevation survey. No, not, not everybody.
No, if.
If you have budgetary, not everybody, like I said, I have 125, 36, I'm going to do a Loma, because the bank wanted it.
The only people.
Didn't have a problem.
Sorry to interrupt, the only people that require an elevation certificate are homes that still have the floodlight crossing the actual house. And let me be clear on this, because this is extremely confusing. Flood insurance. Flood insurance triggers when your property, not your house, when your property is in the flood plain. It could be an inch of, an inch of flood plain touches you, your bank will contact you, get flood insurance. What you can do without the benefit of an elevation certificate is you can file a Loma. LOMAs are where it's just obvious, you look at the map and you go, I know it touches the corner of my property, I shouldn't have, or if it's not even on my property, the insurance company is just wrong, it's not touching it all. So that's out as seen. It means you look at it, you're like, I don't need, I don't need an engineer, I don't need need a surveyor, I need nothing." However, let's say, let's say that line crosses your house, and you're like...
Is that the structure?
Structure, a house.
Right, exactly.
The line, the line goes right through, it goes right through my bedroom, and I go, "Ridiculous, I've never flooded." That's where the elevation certificate is for. You're saying, "By elevation, I will not get flooded." Because we do the best we can, but remember, the accuracy of the information I'm using is plus or minus of two. There will, nothing's perfect. We do a lot better, but we're not perfect.
So, at the end of this, some will have to do nothing, they're out, some will still have to get an elevation, some are gonna have to get a Loma, we're not paying the Loma, we're paying the big nut, getting the maps.
But they made the Lomas so easy, and it's like, "I promise you can do it yourself." Especially since the deeds are actually online.
The question I follow up is, on this new map, if they're no longer in the flood zone, you don't need, we're getting elevation certificates?
No. No, if you're...
So, you shouldn't have to get that, the new map does, and I'm no longer in it, right? And that, you know, you shouldn't have to...
No.
Have the 125 in Oakwood, even though it's...
Well, okay.
Possible, yeah, 125. Some people just went to the bank, and they looked at the map, and now, some people, the banks have been on Lomas, even though it's not...
It depends on, and I'll clarify that, because that's also confusing there, it's, the companies, the banks use different companies to do their, to do their assessments, and some of the companies are very good, and will look at it and say, "Okay, physically out, no problem," and other companies will just say, "You know, we want, we want their professional to concur," and that's what the Lomas are for. It was, it survived.
And the Loma, as I said, you can file it yourself, more than two computers, maybe just kind of reading, you got, the DMC was $400, I think it was?
For elevation certificate.
Four hundred? Four hundred. I think the normal five to six number.
They're using more like a thousand, that's a very good rate. Elevation certificate is one of them.
You do use LMA, Nick said.
Oh, no, and that's elevation certificate, Lomas you can do yourself for free, FEMA doesn't charge for private homes.
Elevation, you need to certify your, your... You know, the Loma was 400, but no, no, if people need DMC to do...
If they need an elevation certificate.
Right, but the DMC was also assisting Lomas, right?
Really? I'm the worst businessman on earth.
They will do it. They were doing the elevations for 400, I guess they're now...
The elevation is 400, they didn't mind.
So, they were doing it for 400, which is great.
But then, if you wanted, then to file it, it was an extra, three or $400, I forget.
Right. And we'll discuss this again as we go, so the point is, if you're, if you're not, if your structure's not in it, you don't have to wait for us.
This is the issue, we're gonna go, think about this.
Yeah.
I'm over on Chestnut Street, I've been there over 25 years, I've never flooded.
Do you mind getting the street number?
Seven Chestnut Street. My son-in-law is an engineer for a engineering firm, he mentioned to me, he knew someone that could come, take care of all the stuff on there. So, I, everything's submitted to FEMA, I don't know what he did, the process, all I know is I got my rebate, my grant, $2,000, just last year.
Resume?
I did elevation, my first floor is not in the flood grade of, my furnace is in the basement, they asked me about that, washer and dryer, the building appliances were not in my basement, I would have been exempt from flood insurance, that's what I was told. So, everything was submitted to FEMA, eight months later, I got a notice from FEMA, they reduced my flood insurance by $1,000. You know how about that?
Yeah, that's, what happened there was, there are positives elevation certificates, even if you're not removed from the zone, with an elevation certificate, it can prove that the finished structures of your house are up and out, you know? And that's what happened to you. It was probably...
I never flooded, I think I wore on my yard.
That's what we're doing this effort. Elevations are, because the problem with the elevation, let me tell you the problem with the elevation certificate, people, people are like, "Well, why don't we just file that? Who needs that null and engineering?" People say that all the time, but, it hurts. Elevation certificates use the existing map, so the problem is that elevation is wrong, the surveyor has to use it, it's not the surveyor's fault. So, let's say it's elevation 850, and you're like, "That's ridiculous, the water doesn't get that high." The problem is the map say it does. So, they take that elevation, and they put it on the data they collected, they collected most adjacent grades, and they collected your first finished floor, your basement floor, all that, and when they put that all into their little chemical, little formula, it fits out a cost. So, what happened was, you found out by elevation that they are higher than they were assuming, that reduced your rate, but it will not remove you from the flood.
You finish your process, what you're doing, I mean, quickly eliminate the problem.
You use a competitor, no way. None. Yeah, I don't know, I'd say no, I'd say no chance. Seven Chestnut, huh?
If you guys can ask a question, everyone will be interested. So, let's say, like, a year and a half from now, I want to sell my house, and the map is done, does this old map go away, like, is there a record of this anymore, or this is the map, it's all been used, all that?
Would you use a competitor? I would say, I would say, once, once these changes are in effect, the chances of them being changed again in the next 20 years is very, very low.
The question though is, once your map's in place, and a builder, a buyer, new mortgage done, you have a potential buyer, because they're look see, we're only gonna see the new map, the old one's gone.
Yes, the old, the old map is superseded. For instance, right now, if you go online, and if you go to, you can actually look at the map yourself, if you Google FEMA Map Service Center and type in your address, it actually pulls up the appropriate map.
That's how we figure out.
Oh, well done, you're ahead of me, I see how it is. No, if, if you do that, like, Roy Avenue, when the map pops up, it's the one we developed for the town. So, no, it's, once the map's been superseded, there's no way back.
So, the old map's gone, and then what?
The only, the only potential that you have for an issue, and it's not an issue, because you can just correct them, is if they, if they have an older map unfiled for some reason.
A bank, or a builder, or something, you'd have to deal with it.
But you'd just say that's incorrect.
Right, Mark? Um, 22 Chestnut Street, as far as I've been here, we never flooded.
How long have you lived there?
Uh, 10 years, around 11. And as far as I first moved in there, they told me that the zone was rated C.
C-zone.
And then, so they said that's a likely through a flood, so they complained to me more or less, but then I refind it, and then they gave me the current zone as A.
AE.
AE. Which is worse, correct?
Yeah, awesome, uh, no, what happened with, before, what there used to be was AD and C zones. You know, levels, levels of danger, levels of severity, and then they scrapped that method, I think it was late 80s, and then they came up with the AE zone, the AE zone is a 100 year zone, okay? So, it's, it's pretty much the same thing as you were before, it's not a huge difference.
Question?
And it'll continue going up towards...
Question without, for everyone, it's the same, but it's questioning.
And it'll keep going up over the next couple of years, unfortunately, which is why this effort is so important.
You have another, we may not be perfect, is that right? How much did this five, that's about to...
Close to my girl, 22,000.
Based on that, perfect.
Just this one, not, we're going, well, Oakwood was there, but the premium we removed just from Oakwood was in excess of $400,000.
Per year.
Per year, the premium for it.
Yeah, definitely, and that was, and I'm not gonna sell myself, still, we're already doing the work, but the premium reductions, I would never, because you asked before, why was it like this? I would not, because we looked at it, I'd never recommend our services in areas that wouldn't, wouldn't benefit at all. This is the only other tributary where you'll, you'll actually see a return quickly to residents. Yeah, and, I mean, the most extreme I've ever, I've ever seen was Oakwood Lake, obviously.
Property value, property values, well, it's...
Oh, it's, 30% of your property value is tied to your flood zone, I mean, it's incredible. And you now have an entire section of town that's out.
I live at 76 Green. Looking at this map, the red line and the blue line just touch, and I mean, touch probably the bank of the Brook, which is directly, like, adjacent to my property.
Okay.
And I've lived here for 20 years, and I've never flooded.
So, you're never employed as well, nothing?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we don't, we live in 14.
We are not, we haven't.
We haven't.
15 years owning a home, being 20 years.
Even if you had a mortgage, you didn't have pleasure? Yeah, it's, he said the edge of the property just tips it?
Yeah, this, yes.
Okay.
So, that's the elevation. The Brook is much lower than the map.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm saying, and that, that's the kind of area that obviously we're not gonna move it in, we would just ask the provider if you have, including just what you just said, you know, I've lived there for 20 years, I have never flooded.
I've actually, like, benches and runs down, it's right behind our house, and it's down there.
Well, this is the area, we have that really steep drop, in this area we're, because, one thing I want to remind everyone, on these maps, we're using LiDAR, LiDAR is a, is surface scan, because a plane flies at a little altitude, scans the surface, it misses drops like that. So, in areas where you have sea drop into a stream, it's not picked up, and that's why we appreciate it, the town being as DMC, because now we can actually correctly put stream depths in, and, well, because the other thing too is, even if we pick the stream up, it reflects off the water surface, so you lose the entire stream itself from the surveys. So, even if they, even if we got lucky and we picked up some of the stream, any below surface isn't picked up.
And just gradually steps down as it goes.
Yeah, yeah, if you looked, we have a really neat looking model, but if you look real closely at it, you notice the streams aren't very deep, which is not accurate, they are deep. So, that's why, that's why I asked for field survey.
Yeah, a property in Texas, taking off the flood zone to a place where it's, we have that.
Absolutely, I read that. None of the worst.
Mayor, I'll take that question, whatever.
Understood.
Okay, just gonna go there.
When you say field inspections, does that mean people will be on a property, around a property?
Uh, people will be along streams and streams and bridges. If your property intersects a stream, you may see somebody just wandering, they'll be walking right down the stream itself, and we need to take photographs to show, and this is, this is again for FEMA, we have to show what the stream condition is, what the, what the overbanks are, and that sort of thing. So, you know, no one should be around your house itself, or just be in the stream. And if they're from that null and engineering, the whole idea, and we always know to find the town as a courtesy, through the mayor, it's left the police department know that the crazy people walking through the culverts are actually engineers.
And then DMC?
Yeah, I would assume DMC is the same.
Any other questions?
Yes.
I would have some questions.
Right.
Um, in the American, we have some charts, and it's, 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 it's just, we find out, and we're, we're, we're sure it's in.
And you're where it registers to the wall, right, and you're on the other side of the storefront.
I know exactly where that is.
That's the area that you guys are 20 plus feet above the Brook.
Yeah, exactly where that is.
So, you know, the confident that's gonna come out, and or, if it takes elevations, I personally, I think you guys go get elevation certificates tomorrow, and get out, without waiting for us, but that's your problem.
If you're between Nobles Avenue and Oak Street, I mean, we, there's obviously a major problem there, and our maps have people out of it up, because that's one of those deep stream corridors, we just, we don't have the eye.
Right here.
Yes, no, no, that, no, that one we're aware of, yes.
No, I know, but I'm just, I personally, but I'm not an engineer, I think they, they go with elevations now, in your own dying, probably get out, before waiting for us.
An elevation report, will you do the flood zone, or the...
Only, I want to be very cautious about that, only if, the only way an elevation certificate helps you now, is if even with an incorrect elevation, which is what I'm professing FEMA has, you're still out.
There's no guarantee, I'm right, if the elevation's wrong in your area, then the elevation may not, because they see you on incorrect app, so...
The elevation certificate, they, they also, all the, the surveyors do a great job on your house, but they have to use the FEMA elevation to project the flood plain, and if that's wrong, let's say they're five feet too high, well, you're not, you're an elevation certificate with an elevation of five feet too high.
Would a, would someone like DMC, who's doing these reforms, be able to tell them in advance? You know, are they gonna be successful or not?
No.
I don't know.
There's no way to do it.
I'm sorry?
That one was a DMO.
Yeah. So, again, that's a very important, they were too, correct, they said my house is still late, so...
The house is in late?
They were saying, now the flood plain comes through, they call my house late.
Right, what, what's your address?
It's very old, right?
It used to be a little...
Right back, yeah.
Right behind it, yeah.
No way, you're in the...
No, 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 that's the area, again, there's no way this is right. Because I, I mean, I'll, I'll talk to people individually, you know, when the time comes, because these areas right now, where you can probably, that is seen on a lot of these already, but, yeah, well...
What is your number on Nobles?
Seven.
Seven, okay, make sure you email me and Nick.
Yeah, please.
Your, you know, your names and phones and all.
Nobles, oh, please, please, because that's where, again, the data that we have from FEMA is not good, we're gonna be relying heavily on the survey data and what you guys said, because there's not very good data along that, that small tributary at all.
These two tributaries are so visual, that they're not gonna flood, that it's a shame they have to wait a year, or possibly a year or two.
We'll, we'll do, we'll start with that section, we'll start about, we'll start about Nobles Avenue.
Where you should file one shot, right?
Yes.
So, and how, what can they do now?
No, what I'm saying is, if it's that inaccurate, that's gonna take the longest amount of time, we'll start there.
So, we'll just keep in the loop, I don't want to see this been 400, if the elevation's wrong, and it's not successful, but how could we...
Yeah, we'll get an elevation report, it just shows, or poses not being in or, you know. Well, like I said, the information they're using is wrong.
Yes, that's the other day, a street, now an elevation certificate filed with the town as well, that shows that you're in the flood zone by six feet, you're like, it's inaccurate. But the base flood elevation, the BFE, will, will be wrong right now until it's corrected.
I think it was a DMO.
Yeah.
We purchased it, we had no problem, but when we see the Brook, back to the kitchen, my yard is spent since, it's...
There's never, there's never a wasted photograph, there's never a wasted story, please send them all in. I mean, we, we, last time, I, and I'm not just saying this to make everyone feel good about submitting, on Oakwood Lake Brook, we've probably used every single story we received in the mapping effort, every single story we have, it's part of the map, we have, it's part of the base information, you click on any house, and all the stories are in there with photographs.
So, you, you're in the flood zone, you're, hey, look, you're not, nobody's got you, you have mortgage?
Nice job. Light low for a while, keep, keep the, keep the lights off, don't answer the door.
Isn't it weird where they're not, he is, and he's higher up than them, higher than the Brooklyn?
That almost sounds arbitrary, but that's the way.
Our house is on the corner of him, or we, we...
But the Brook is more, it's closer to your dwelling than it is to me.
It's out of time, still, it's close to our neighborhood, it is.
I just, this is all wrong.
And how do they, why do they change that, even if they do, because they don't, they weren't, or else it's 75, we weren't.
Well, they were wrong in 75, it rules it.
Because we weren't, and we weren't.
Right, because the banks change their rules, they have to back the model, it's happening, but...
It's because I think, and I'm guessing banks have been burned in the past, that's why they went from structure out to just property out, and all of a sudden, people started getting noticed, who are like, "That's ridic," you know, especially, people, people got killed in this, where people had large properties. Because if they have three acres in your, in your lakefront, all of a sudden you have flood insurance, you're like, "This is ridiculous," and 35 feet above the lake, didn't matter.
Was that pre-sanding, or was it post-sanding that really...
Pre-sanding, I, I, I noticed a big change around 2005, because I remember, Secaucus, New Jersey, hundreds of homes got moved in around 2005, that the property touched a river, but the house was, the house was nowhere near it.